We'll call to order the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, February 8th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Power heads, please. Father, we thank you for this great town that you have allowed us to be citizenships of. We thank you, Father, for the leadership, the chairman and all the councilmen and councilwomen. We thank you, Father, for those who have labored and have enjoyed the blessings that we've seen in this town. We pray, Father, for the different departments, organizations, police department, all those who are serving. Keep them safe, Lord. Keep our schools safe. Keep, oh God, our communities safe. We thank you that your hand has been upon us. Bless this meeting, that it go forth, oh God, with grace and effective collaboration. We thank you for your peace upon this town and your love and your joy that shall reflect in Jesus' name. Amen.
Unfortunately, the United States just passed a 800,000-person mark for deaths related to COVID-19. I'd like to now ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The pledge is to lead us through the flag of the United States of America. The interior of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see where the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars fill the perilous skies? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the monsters singing, it grew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Excellent. Madam Clerk Trezor, would you please call the roll tonight?
Councilman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilwoman Munchak.
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Present.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman White.
Here.
President Bello.
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Tonight, under petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we will invite back up to the front the Maryville High School Vocal Teens under the direction of Melinda Reinhardt, who was the choral director at Maryville High School, and they're going to do a special presentation for us tonight to celebrate Black History. Melinda, I read recently where quite a few first-place ribbons came out of, uh...
All of them.
Congratulations.
Sweet.
How many was that? Melinda?
Uh, we had thirteen on... I'm sorry. Twelve vocal solos and seven ensembles.
Okay.
That, uh... So I didn't tell you all the numbers of all the kids because there were different numbers in every ensemble. But very, very proud of our students, and this is the first in-person contest that we've had in two years.
Sure.
So we did a virtual ISMA last year and did very well, but to get back into the swing of things and be out in the public and jumping around from room to room, very, very proud of them. And it was noted several times that they travel in packs and they are always there to support one another as they're performing, so...
That's great.
Very, very proud of them. And the two selections that we have today are some spirituals that we have... One of the first one that we took to contest, Wade in the Water by H.T. Berlay, and we're actually going to be having a concert on Thursday that will celebrate all of the soloists and all the ensembles, as well as the other choirs, their work since our Christmas concert. So we have the Susan and Emma Contest Concert that is this Thursday at 7:00, and this group will be performing along with the soloists that went to the... That will be going to stay on the 19th of February.
Well, that's great. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Every time I feel the spirit moving in my heart, I will pray. Yes, every time I feel the spirit moving in my heart, I will pray. Every time I feel the spirit moving in my heart, I will pray. Yes, every time I feel the spirit moving in my heart, I will pray.
So, Mr. Bello, were you a vocal teazzac in the day?
I was.
So you would have to know... I'm sorry, my phone's over. So you would have to know Brothers Sing On, right?
Oh, yes. I've said it a few times. Not recently, though.
I do have my little Indiana-shaped medal with the, uh...
Amen, let our singing songs round like a whirligong! As it meets our singing drums, so bright the heart and mind! Care and sorrow now be gone! Brothers and songs sing on! Brothers, sing on! Sing on! You live a wonder, we true adore, singing the singing breeze! Oohing and hawing on the distant shore, over the tossing seas! Still ring by the stars above! His vessel the song of love! Brothers, sing on! Sing on! Air is best, yours we greet, you listen to our voices strong! With glad and open hearts we meet you, hear our festive ball of song! Care and sorrow now be gone! Brothers and songs sing on! Brothers, sing on! Sing on!
Many waters cannot quench fire, by the devil's stern! Neither can the fester's drink! Neither can the flood's drink! Neither can it drown! Set thee as a seal upon your heart! As a seal upon your heart! Love is strong as death! Love is strong as death!
The Lord makes his countenance upon you!
And give you peace!
And give you peace! The Lord makes his ways, he shine upon you! And be gracious unto you! And be gracious! Oh, Lord, be gracious! Gracious on to you!
Thank you, Mrs. Reinhardt and the Vocal Teens. Mr. Hardaway brought this idea to us to celebrate this month with partnering with the high school and middle schools to do some recognition for Black History Month. And I think it's a beautiful thing to do. Mr. Hardaway? Do you need to add?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Nick Brown, who's the superintendent of schools, Dr. Danny Lackey. He's one of the administrators, and Ms. Thomas is a school board member.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank you all for taking time tonight to come out and be with us this evening. And in two weeks, we will have MIS students coming in to give us their art display for what they've done for Black History Month. And hopefully, we'll put them... We'll line them up here, whatever they've done for their display. And if you guys would be gracious enough to let us keep them till the end of the week, until Black History Month is over, we would really appreciate it, just to be able to show the talents of the fifth and sixth graders. But again, thank you on behalf of Maryville Town Council and the department heads here. We appreciate you guys taking time out tonight and come out, and you guys are... I get... I just get choked up every time I hear this group, because I've heard of it so many times now, and each time it gets better and better and better. So I appreciate you guys and continue doing what you're doing, and we will continue to support you. God bless you all.
Thank you. Mike, if you want to grab your microphones, it won't bother us at all as we get into the meeting here. Not a problem.
I've got one other thing, Mr. President, under petitions and communications.
Sure.
If you don't mind. I received a letter from the City of Hammond Community Development Group, and I was a little concerned when I received the letter, because it was from the Planning and Building Department. Trying to figure that out. But on February 17th, which is next Thursday, the Hammond... At the Hammond Sports Complex, they will be having their annual Black History Month program. And I'll just read you a little excerpt from it. "As part of this year's celebration, we will be recognizing phenomenal African-American civil leaders. Because of your stellar accomplishments and achievements and successes, it is my distinct pleasure to inform you that you will be one of the greatest that ever came out of the City of Hammond. And so next week, I will be honored..."
Oh, that's great. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Rich.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Sure.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Also, I had talked to some school board members earlier this week, and I wanted to invite them also to the council at the next council meeting for recognition of what Maryville first African-Americans. I wanted to honor them as long as... And other things from specifically Maryville. So I just wanted to put that on the agenda, if it's appropriate, to do so. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you again, Melinda, Mrs. Reinhardt.
Of course.
And the students. Thank you so much. Beautiful job. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher, approval for the February 8th, and also the approval of the town council meeting minutes of January 25th.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees. Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Munchak.
Just a big thank you to our Public Works. I know they were extremely busy last week. Good job to Steve, you, and the whole crew over there.
Thank you, for sure.
Just a huge thank you. I know things went really good, and we'll continue to keep working hard for the town.
I have to add to that, please.
Mrs. Uzalak.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure.
There was a woman in my ward that her baby was due that day, and the street was not plowed or shoveled at that time. I called Steve. He got the truck out right away, within a half an hour after that. She left to the hospital, and I had a baby. So, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
We all appreciate it.
You're welcome.
In fourth ward, and they were all cheering for you.
Well, we're happy to do it.
They named the baby Steve?
No, but they're named by Mr. and Mrs. Moore. I don't know what they named the baby. They're all the news that's calling me at this time.
No, not a problem.
You did a good job, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're not perfect in our department, but we try every day, and we're striving for it.
I know. Well, they weren't even out there yet, but you got them out there, fourth ward, and they thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Got a couple of things under here. Steve and I and Leonard has been concerned, and at this time, I'm going to call a committee meeting for 5:00 on Tuesday, Steve, before the Plan Commission Workshop. And I'd like to talk about the signage that we've been discussing about the bridges on I-65 and US-30. So if you can get us the information...
Yep.
And you and Leonard and I, if you need an NDOT representative, maybe you can get one over here.
We need to... I think we need to figure out what we're going to do first.
Right.
And then we'll do that.
All right. So that'll be an Elections and Public Relations Committee meeting at 5:00, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Secondly, it is that time of year... Actually, it's the second time we've done this. As a representative of the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce, and I also happen to be chairman of this committee, it's kind of a spinoff of the Gala Committee, we are having our second annual Business Excellence Awards at the Mike Anderson Event Center inside the Dean and Barbara White Community Center on Thursday, March 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Now, in the past, we have sponsored a table. This year, we have eight awards that we're going to be giving out. They are the Legacy Award, the Not-for-Profit Award, the Business Leader Award, the Business Success Award, the Young Entrepreneur Award, the Corporate Responsibility Award, Minority Business Award, and the Volunteer of the Year Award. I will tell you personally and publicly, I have turned in three nominations myself. The Legacy Award, I nominated Walter Cook Insurance. For the Not-for-Profit, I nominated Meals on Wheels. And for the Minority Business, I nominated Myel Cosmetics, Melvin and Monique Rodriguez, for the commitment they made to the town to stay in town. They built the 50,000-square-foot building there off of Mississippi. So we'll see when the committee meets. What I would ask at this time from the members is that we have Pat secure a $750 award sponsorship in the town's name. That would get us a table of eight seats. And Pat, if you could have Linda contact the rest of the council. I will obviously be the emcee. If anyone wants to come and take up those eight seats, if we need more, Pat, they're $50 apiece. And also, Mr. President, I would ask for your indulgence. You will be handing out the Legacy Award again this year on behalf of the town. That will be the award we sponsor, is the Legacy Award. So I also have blank nomination forms that Pat can make copies. Unfortunately, we need the nominations by tomorrow, close of business. If anybody else wants to nominate any other businesses in town, the committee will look at them on Thursday, and then we will announce those winners on March 10th.
Great.
Okay? That concludes... Do I need a motion on the 7:50, Mr. President?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
You have one anyway.
I have one anyway.
All in...
And by the way, it is cocktails and heavy hors d'oeuvres from 5:00 to 7:00.
How heavy?
It's not a meal, dear, but it's... You can fill up, I'm sure. It's Dimitri's catering, so...
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you. That's all.
Very good. Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Don't have a lot to add to today other than the positivity rate, which I think is a key indicator of what's actually going on. There's a lot of data out there, so I don't want to confuse people with, you know, other data that they get. But I can definitely say that I would think that if you went to the Lake County Health Department or this Indiana Health Department of Health, you can get a lot of great information. I also would like to start looking at things from a perspective of more of a response, and I think maybe Pat will be able to add to what we got today in his email, if you can do that for us, Pat.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. I believe in referencing a letter that was put together by our Vaccine Program Coordinator, Ms. Davis. It has to do with an update on our vaccine incentive program and how many cards have been given out. It's a very thorough and informative letter. We will continue to provide this type of information to the town council. Additionally, we were contacted by the Lake County Health Department. They are collaborating with the Indiana Department of Health. The entities are looking for a location in Lake County. They've identified Maryville. We are looking for locations in Maryville, and we will be responding to them very soon. The dates they've identified are next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the following Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So that's a short synopsis of what's going on recently.
Thank you, Pat. Additionally, Mr. President, I did look at one location that Pat had suggested I thought might be a good idea. I don't know if he had actually talked to the chief about it, but at the Prusing Center down there, I think that's an excellent place, because you've got the communities right there to come together. In terms of density, I think that would be a great place to do that, because, of course, COVID has not went away. Don't want to get too relaxed. Even though the positivity rate went down from the last number that Myers gave, from 29% down to 19%, that's still a pretty high number in terms of positivity, especially when we started monitoring it when it was at 3% and 4%. So I just want to be more of a responsible one. I thank Pat and whoever else put that together to try to keep Maryville citizens in good health.
Mr. White, the Prusing Center, I believe, is available, right, Chief?
Not next week, because we are training, but the week of the 23rd through the 26th is open.
Mr. President, I emailed Pat back. I don't know if it got to everybody, Pat, but, you know, we got a 94,000-square-foot building up on Broadway we paid for, and we hosted the shots the first time the Department of Health came through here. And, Torrance, I don't know what Barb's schedule's like, but Pat said he was going to check into it, and that's where we hosted. My daughter and my wife got their shots at the Dean and Barbara White Center, and it's got a lot of parking, and we don't have a conflict with the police, so long as Barb is not... So long as Barb has not rented anything out, I'm guessing maybe for Saturday, Torrance, on those weekends. I don't want to take it away, I throw it out there for discussion if we're going to talk about it.
We'll look at the dates. We did talk briefly about it, Pat and I did. So tomorrow, I'll let Barb know. We'll look at the dates and get it confirmed.
Yeah, sometimes, Mr. President, it's good to, if the people don't come to you, you got to take it to the people. And I think that would be an excellent place. And I'm not against what you're saying. I mean, either or. It just depends on, to me, to see scheduling, whether it's a scheduling conflict. Additionally, Mr. President, I had talked to Steve, Crystal and Environmental. I asked him would he take him and, you know what I'm talking about, Kevin Markle, down to the compost facility so Marge can understand what we're trying to look at there and how things are supposed to operate. So I wanted her to get opportunity.
Or look at what?
Decomposing leaves and to look at the actual proper operation.
I just wanted to know what you wanted me to do.
Okay. Yeah, and plus, we want to feed those piles and stuff. So I want her to look at it from when it began because I think what they leave out there is like, they leave them out there for three years and wait for them to be decomposed. I think we can get them done in four months, max.
And you were in charge of that at one time, or?
Well, actually, I ran the Lake County Solid Waste District's compost facility, which is like on 20 acres of land and stuff. So I do understand. I mean, we even have to check temperatures on those because that's how you can tell when that compost pile is actually getting really active. So I think you're going to have to help us buy a temperature probe for that, Mr. Steve. I have nothing else to add, Mr. President.
I would like to add to the COVID report, Mr. President.
Sure, absolutely.
There were 64 residents from Lake County, Northwestern Indiana, that passed last week. And I want to give homage to Carmen Hogan. She was a Maryville resident all her life, attended Maryville High School, and worked at the American Legion on Broadway. She passed from COVID last week, and her wake is tomorrow at Calumet Funeral Home on Taff Street. So, and another thing, the poor girl never had her shot. So please get out there and get your shots, people. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. White, would you just work with Pat and then organize the two sessions?
I will, sir.
Whatever building is available and move forward. I'm assuming that's okay with the council.
Yes. And I also would like to, you know, still add, Mr. President, the program with Richard set up in the terms of the vaccine cards and stuff, I think we still should promote that heavily. And that's just another response if you really look at what we're trying to do here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Yeah, our meeting last week was canceled due to the weather, so it is rescheduled for this Thursday. So hopefully, we'll have some news after that. Other than that, the only thing I have that's ready is we, I know the Maryville FLP is having their fundraiser on the 20th at 11:30 right here at the American Legion. It's usually a really good turnout. They'd like to see some of the council there for support, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to call a Redevelopment Commission Workshop for Tuesday night at 5:30 before the Plan Commission. Jeff and Margie and I are intimately involved, and I think you are as well, Mr. Bella. This is in your ward. Pat and Steve and Sheila, what I want to do is invite Randy Hall and Liberty Estates to discuss the Whitcomb Street situation further with the Redevelopment Commission. I'm going to do it under the auspice of RDC. Don, you're more than welcome to attend. Rick, you'll be there, I'm guessing, as the ward councilman. And I probably would prefer Mr. Svetinoff to be there as well. You're going to have to be there for the public hearing anyways, Joe, for 6:30. We have two items on the Plan Commission that night.
Yes.
And this is one of them, the condition of Whitcomb Street. And we had a long discussion about that, Jeff, the other night.
At that workshop.
At that workshop. And I think we all need to get together and talk with this developer about what's going to happen with that road.
That's Randy Hall.
Randy Hall. So that'll be 5:30, RDC Workshop on Tuesday, the 18th.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah. Oh, you're going to be out of town, aren't you?
That's fine. Let's still do it. I'm going to have, Joe can sit in for me.
All right.
If that's okay, Joe.
I forgot you were, I forgot you were going to be out of town.
Next Tuesday.
Before our Plan Commission meeting.
Good, okay.
Well, because we need to do something.
Sure.
Because Randy's going to expect a final PUD vote recommendation from the Plan Commission to the council unless...
Could you approve and just leave the road issue as a separate item?
I, Joe, I don't, I mean...
That's possible, Joe.
It's kind of part and parcel.
Part and parcel.
Okay.
Obviously, the Plan Commission has the right to defer this for 30 days.
Well, correct. I'm sure the developer will be.
But we did set up a meeting with them. We told them to attend the meeting Tuesday. So maybe we should go ahead with what you're saying.
Let's go ahead and have the workshop at 5:30.
Okay, that sounds good.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Yes. Torrance, I had a couple of calls about the bike trail again, right after the last snow start. They said that it was plowed or cleaned, but there was still a lot of snow there. So maybe you could check on that.
That's the one at Erie Lacawanna Trail?
Yeah, the bike trail right behind Maryville into Crown Point.
Yeah, Crown Point. Yeah, we discussed that today with them.
You went back there today?
We had a meeting today with the staff, and we talked about that bike trail specifically. And just doubling up and making sure that after we do it, go back and check it again to make sure all the snow was plowed. And if we need any resources, make sure we reach out, make sure we get that done completely.
Well, there's supposed to be piles of snow there, so you could check it out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. President, may I add to?
What?
Yes, I'd like to add, actually, this question would probably include from Matt. Of course, on, at the Prusen Center Park, they have a little wetland area there. And since they put the actual ponds in or storm retention basins in, I was wondering, could we expand the park now that the wetlands will not be impacted by it?
Well, expand the park in what way, like the trail?
Well, I mean, in terms of the footing, planting grass, all in that area that's not doable?
No, because we actually avoided the existing wetlands with the detention ponds that we have there.
Yes.
There's not much other upland areas that you could put usable park space there other than, well, maybe some small areas. You know, if you want us to look into that, we could, but I don't know how much it'd be up to Torrance to determine, and the parks board to determine that.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to know.
They didn't make more usable space in terms of, you know, the park itself?
Sure. I just want to know, was it feasible for us to look at that? To see if we can do that expansion, again, because the ponds are there now? I know that the State of Indiana actually said, you know, and I'm a wetlands guy. I don't like seeing wetlands filled in, but the State of Indiana say that's doable now. So if it's a feasible situation, I'd like for us to look into it. If not, then we'll just leave it like it is.
How much space is there, Leonard?
I would say it's about maybe a 75-foot by 100-foot area.
It's out of the wetland, though.
It's actually the wetland.
The wetland? Because I thought we were not allowed to go into the wetland.
Yes, we're allowed now because that's federal law and it's state law. They're allowed.
Federal law said we could go into the wetland.
Well, Joe probably could. Can you answer that, Joe?
Is that true, Joe?
I'll look into it.
Okay, yes.
Because I had a problem with the wetland in fourth ward.
The wetland issue in Indiana has not been settled. It's still in flux right now, so I'll be glad to get you an answer, though.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else to add, Mr. President.
Thank you. Abandoned Blighted Properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we talked about the parcels that have been on tax sale. And Maryville has 110 parcels, which is 1.9%, which is kind of like a small number, but for us, it's, for me, it's a large number. And so we're just going to continue to monitor that. And when they have the commissioner's sale and the tax sale, we'll look at, well, if there's anything on those lists that maybe the town can take over and be able to do something with so that they don't stay, lay dormant for any length of time. I'm just paying attention to it, Mr. President, and I'll keep everybody posted. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a, we had a committee meeting February 1st. Jeff and Leonard and I, Steve was there, and Torrance was there, and we ran through several items, so bear with me. There was a discussion about the south wall. And Joe, I would ask that you, if you could look into the naming rights agreement on what we can and cannot do on that south wall. The committee was concerned that if, an idea was presented about putting a mural on that south wall, and we wondered if that would be in violation of the naming rights with the White Family Foundation. So I think Torrance is going to look into the possibility. I don't know if you're planning, Torrance, for drive-in movies in the summertime. We talked about that on that south wall, projecting onto those south walls and let everybody park in that south parking lot.
Here's the thing, Councilman Pettit, if we have a definite plan, give me the plan.
All right.
And I'll present it to the White Family Foundation.
Okay.
And then I'll get a waiver if there is a conflict with the naming rights agreement.
All right.
So that we can clear up this.
I'll leave that with Torrance. And Torrance, if you can get that to Mr. Svetinoff, I'd appreciate it. We also talked about uplighting. Steve, I think you were going to check into the uplighting on the outside of the buildings.
Yeah, I was going to go with Andrew on that.
Okay. The other item that we talked about was the time capsule. And we weren't sure where we were going to put it, and I think it was a consensus, Leonard and Jeff of the committee, that we would like to bury the time capsule by the cobalt box that was presented, put everything in the time capsule, but we would bury it outside with a plaque to be opened in 50 years. I'm trying to think. The other item, big item, is that I believe the bridge is out for bid, correct, Steve? The pedestrian bridge?
It's advertised right now, yeah. So we will be visibly coming in shortly, so, and construction starting in the spring.
Yeah. And we also discussed the winter weather policy and plan of action and the warming center issue, that the Dean and Barbara White Center would be considered a warming center if we were to get temperatures that were, you know, below freezing. And then the last thing we talked about is, in the Mike Anderson Event Center, unfortunately, there has been some damage to the walls because of chairs, people bumping it with chairs and nicking the blue paint and that. And I think what we decided, Jeff, is we were going to investigate and get estimates on wallpapering the blue walls that are inside the Mike Anderson Event Center. I think that was the consensus of the committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have a meeting tomorrow with the ID and Tina, and we're going to go over all that and hopefully get some kind of finalization done. I just want to stress to the council, I know everybody's got a lot of events going on at the center. Everybody wants this done before their event, but I'm not going to rush this.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
This is something I want to make sure when it gets done, it gets done right. And it's not something we're looking at down the road.
Yeah, and I applaud Tina because she had a, at the committee meeting, she had a book of heavy, heavy, commercial-grade wallpaper that we kind of went through, and we were all flipping through, and we let Mr. Blue over there decide which pattern he wants to put in there with his ID, so.
When she first mentioned wallpaper, automatically in my head, I was like, there's no way. But then when she actually gave us the samples and the industrial texture to it, I was like, wow, this is a big difference.
You bang it with a chair, I don't think you're going to gouge it. You bang that drywall, that blue paint, it's, you've got white marks all over. And I think, Torrance, they said room two is really bad?
Yes.
Room one is bad, too.
Yeah. So we talked about that. So that's where we're at, Mr. President.
One other thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Jeff or Leonard, or Torrance, or Steve, chime in.
Yeah, one other thing, I know we just discussed it. It wasn't a decision. But with the mural, it's kind of a hard decision of what we're going to do, if we're going to go this way or that way, or what direction we're going to go into. I know one thing we all talked about as a possibility is to get some kind of like outdoor projection for that wall. This way, you can change seasonally what you want on that wall and then use it for theater or whatever else you want to use it for. So, you know, Christmas time, you can put some Christmas things up, you know, St. Patrick's Day, Easter's coming up, things like that. So you can change the seasonal projection on that giant wall.
Well, and maybe, Jeff, Torrance, what you do is you do an A and a B plan that Joe can take to the White Family Foundation. And it's, you know, summer, drive-in movie season from June 1st to Labor Day. And the other times, we're going to project, let them know that we would like to project things on those south walls. And as I told the committee, Joe, you know, I know it was sensitive, that the only thing on the outside of that building says Dean and Barbara White Community Center. And so...
I think they'll, I think they'll be understanding of what we want to do and how we want to do it. As long as we do it in a peaceful manner.
Right, okay. All right. Steve, do you have anything else?
I do have one, one thing, two things. One, we talked about burying that time capsule. We're going to have to make sure what has been ordered is going to be airtight. I mean, you're talking just a job box. It's not going to be airtight. It's not going to seal properly. Whatever is going to be in there is going to be ruined. So either we relook at that or we suspend it from the ceiling.
Right.
But we got to have something that's going to be airtight.
Okay.
So mention that. One other thing real quick, the last cargo container was delivered and set, was set in place Friday for storage for Torrance's staff. I'll get, Torrance, I'll get you the information on the gentleman that wrapped the other two. I don't know what you're going to go with. That's up to you and probably the committee. But that has been set. Now, beginning of PO tomorrow, I talked to Joy. She's going to get us a PO so we can order the bleachers. They've been ordered, but they want a PO as a placeholder. So I've got that information. I'll be bringing it down here tomorrow. But they have been ordered. So that's all I have.
Okay. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Special projects, including food and beverage tax, diversity, training, and town's birthday, Mr. Hardaway.
The only thing, Mr. President, that I can think of is that I got your email about the added diversity training for the, we need to identify those that need to attend. And hopefully, we can get everybody in and be 100% this time so that we can move on. We can't move forward with any other training until we get everybody through this first phase of a training. And so if we get everybody through it, then we can look at the next step. So I just encourage all department heads to make sure, if you have anybody that needs to go to that training, that we get them scheduled and get them through it this time so that we can have some second steps. Because, you know, people want to see what we're going to do after this. But we can't do anything after this until we get all employee, all 160 or whatever we have employees through the initial phase of this training.
There is some concern by employees about COVID and sitting through a meeting like that, but we need to encourage them with the safety protocols in place. I know, Kelly, your office had some concerns, so maybe we can talk about that and see what we need to do so they would feel comfortable because...
Maybe, can we look at maybe doing, they can do Zoom training, worst-case scenario.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it's another alternative.
Maybe they can just, if they're that concerned about it, let's provide them with a Zoom environment so that that way, however they get the training, they just need to get the training.
Yep. I'll talk to Dr. Lackey, too, and see what else we can do because it's been very beneficial for everyone to go through it.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to Department and Commission reports. Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much to add other than that the Solid Waste District is no longer in the city of Hammond. It's fully here now. I think the city, again, the city of Hammond is ready to just bulldoze that building. So hopefully, we'll get a chance to, for those that want a tour. Everything, when it's done, I'll let the rest of the council know. Thank you.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our first Zoom tip strategies meeting today. It was a pretty good meeting. We just talked about the communities that were represented. City of Gary, Mayor Jerome Prince, Mayor Iran from Crown Point, lady from Highland, and Mayor Sue Lynch from Portage. And we just kind of like talked about economic development, infrastructure, things that we would like to see done here in the future with CARESAC money and ARP money and things like that to kind of like get an idea of the direction that we want to go. So that's something. Stay tuned. I'll keep everybody posted.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources Director, Matt Lake.
Yeah, real quick, happy to announce that the town of Maryville has once again been designated as a Tree City USA for 2022 by the National Arbor Day Foundation. We also submitted our community rain system annual renewal, so we'll keep that going. We don't have any problems with that. I have interns working on our climate action plan. We thought about doing a press release on the results of our greenhouse gas inventory. Be putting the Risk Tree Removal Project Phase 1 out for bid pretty soon, early next week. And Thursday, I'll be speaking... And Thursday, I'll be speaking at the LTAP Greenwich Conference at Purdue University.
South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Monday and Tuesday, I'll be in Indianapolis, participating with other members of the Tourism Board at legislative sessions, legislative reception. We have our February boarding, pardon me, board meeting on the 18th, and I will report back to the council.
Great, thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck.
We have not had our first call meeting yet. Soon as we do, I'll report back.
Very good, thank you. Department reports, start with Chief Cortino.
Yes, good evening. Just one thing I'd like to point out, I know you probably heard about the incident that took place yesterday in the city of Gary, one of their officers. I reached out to Chief Brian Evans and gave our support and our prayers for the officer with a full recovery. We also assisted at seeing some of our officers, even came in off duty to go down to that location to assist with apprehending that alleged offender. We also assisted them because majority of the officers were on scene, to be expected, with the calls on the south end, Glen Park. So it's all about partnership, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Also would like to thank the Maryville Police Department and its surrounding departments. I was in Gary yesterday, and I didn't know where all those police cars were going. And I think one of our officers is a pilot for the Sheriff's Department.
An aviation.
And they were, Barry Clayton, correct?
I'm sorry about that.
Barry Clayton?
Yes, Barry Clayton.
They really helped out the city of Gary yesterday, and they did help. And I think the dog investment now is really was a great thing because they, those dogs were out there. And Maryville did a great job as well as some of the others. So thank you, Chief, for letting Maryville be represented in the city of Gary, letting them know that we, we working together. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
One more thing, too.
Mr. White.
With a phone call I got today, and I kind of read it, ran it past the chief. I had a constituent call me and says, thank you, Councilman White, for giving me the, having the precinct commitment call me. And I said, well, who is the precinct commitment? She says, a guy named Mr. Moore. I said, actually, I'm your precinct commitment. So I asked her, did she have a number? And she did have the number. And I called the guy myself, and I had her on the second line. And I asked him, I says, is this Mr. Moore? He says, yes. I say, are you the precinct commitment? He says, yeah. I said, well, how could you be the precinct commitment if I'm the precinct commitment? So I just wanted to make everybody sure, make everybody aware that we actually have people out here mimicking elected officials out here. I just thought that was just, when I'm talking to this guy, he said it real strong, yes, my name's Mr. Moore. And I'm like, when did you become precinct commitment? He says, well, I was going to ask you the same thing. So I just want to let you know that there are some people out here.
Well, in the future, I think we need to let Chief know right away so they can investigate if someone's doing that.
Yes.
That's not right.
Yes. So I do have a phone number, and I did contact him. And I was glad the constituents actually called me and let me know some things from going on like that. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Vicki, Code Enforcement.
We've been working hard with trying to get the cars removed for the snow violation. We rode 138 tickets. We did nine toes. And I can say that most of the residents were compliant, and they actually had questions and were trying to understand why their stuff was being ticketed or why it was being towed. And hopefully now, next snow, they'll have an idea of what they need to do. And then tomorrow, I think Steve said that they were going to go clean up the spots where we had removed the cars, and, you know, some of them were pretty tall. So they're supposed to get those cleaned up tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Terrence, Parks Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things that we followed up on after we had our committee meetings, that we developed even more so a check sheet for all of our rentals that we do pre and after to make sure that the residents are taking care of our space and our building. Also to the point where if it's, to the point where it's getting ridiculous, we are flagging them and keeping them on a list for potential and future rentals with them. Also, we are developing our website. We are now in the phase where we're going in tomorrow and editing all programs and those things together that's been on that website. And we are getting very close to switching over our software system to rec desk. There's a couple of things that we still have to add and a couple more trainings.
Very good, thank you, Terrence. Steve?
Can I say? Can I say no report?
Sure, absolutely.
No, no. Public Works has been extremely busy. Of course, the snow started last week on Wednesday. The crew worked 16 hours Wednesday, 12 hours Thursday, and another nine hours on Friday. Like I said before, we're not perfect, but I think they did a bang-up job. You know, the complaints we dealt with, I personally fielded some of them, calls myself, went out into the field, Brian and Kevin and I, and checked on every complaint we had. Vicki and Tiffany have been fantastic. Again, the cars tagged, the word's gotten out, so it's, things have gotten a whole lot better as far as the cars. They're not perfect, but much better than what it was. So hats off to our group at Public Works, they did a fantastic job. And so on that note, one other thing I got, yesterday in this room here, we opened the bid packages for our community crossings project for 2022. We have an apparent low bidder, Reef Riley Construction out of Gary. I don't have the exact amount, 1.648 million dollars for the total project. The documents are going, gone through right now by our consultant, who has the project, and we will be a recommendation to award at our next council meeting.
That's great, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Since you gave a nice report, you can come to work tomorrow.
Thank you.
Lining a building, Sheila Shine. Do you have a report, Sheila?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. The Planning and Building Department has had two trainings for the new software program. Dean will be in next week, and we will have the program up and running. That would be Phase 1. We're looking to go live by the end of the month, Phase 2. I've talked with Joy from the Clerk Treasurer's Office, they will be getting trained with the pet license and the business license, that'll be Phase 2. Phase 3 will kick in when our inspectors can get their inspections from home on their iPads. So we're moving in that direction.
That's great, that's great.
Can I say one other thing, President Bell?
Sure.
Just real quick, Thursday, we were pretty close with, very close with Terrence's maintenance staff down there, if they have any needs. We go down there and help them. Thursday, we didn't have anybody available because we were busy on the roads. I got lucky enough that Assistant Fire Chief Jim Lilly came by the office. I asked him to help us out and do us a favor and take their plow truck and take care of the front lot of the community center. And Jim did that for us, and greatly appreciated. And, you know, that just shows the teamwork that goes into making all this happen. So I really appreciate what Jim did for us, and I did tell him that, so.
Great, thank you, Steve. Anything to add, Pat?
No.
Okay. Tonight, we don't have any general orders before us, so there's no ordinances or resolutions. The next item on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan voucher register summary approval for the purchases for February 8th, 2022. It's a separate piece of paper in your packet, council.
Second.
Much by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of the payment voucher for the ARP program. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Not on the motion, Mr. President, but just a general question on the projects that we've discussed with Trista. Pat, where are we at with the computer orders? I know we discussed getting two laptops, and I think, is Kelly getting, who's getting the computers, Rich?
Uh-uh. She was getting some.
I think Terrence got some. Terrence already got his.
You got yours?
We just got the pay, we haven't paid for them yet.
Okay.
Who's getting, who's, here's what we need, Sean. If you're going to get, we need to have a meeting so that we can approve the money. So if you.
I thought we talked about laptops for economic development and human resources.
Those are ordered.
We approved those already.
Those are done.
Those are done, if they've been ordered.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they've been ordered or not.
No, they've been, they've been ordered.
Okay.
Mike took care of that.
All right.
I don't know, we just approve them. We just, we have a meeting and we approve the money and then.
Right.
Order whatever you need.
Okay.
No, they've been ordered, and it's my understanding that they should be in any day. I've heard that for now, almost two weeks.
They needed those, Mr. Pettit, for camera usage for Zoom calls and things.
Right.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Mr. White, did you have something to add?
No, nothing yet.
Still have a motion on the floor, don't we?
And a second.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. BZA and large gathering actions, Sheila, anything tonight?
No, we, nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Very good. Old business, any old business before the council?
I got one thing, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
So we've, in the last two days, we've given out, we gave out 22 cards today and 18 yesterday.
Oh, wow.
So we are down to 30 cards.
Okay.
The problem is, is that one of the things, one of the complaints that I heard today is that we've got people from all over Lake County trying to get these cards now. So I'd like for the press, if you would, put something in the newspaper that says that it's for Maryville residents only, and it's for anybody that's received shots after December the 1st. And I think that once we conclude these 30, then we're probably going to take a break from this and not get any more. So we're down to 30, and then it's first come, first served on those 30, and then we'll go. Because there's people coming from all over, Gary, St. John's, Dyer, Crown Point, you name it.
Well, if they just move here, they can get a card.
But it's going to be too late by the time they move. By the time they close, we'll be out of the business.
A little levity there.
Richard, for the public's sake, where do they go to get the card?
Where do they go to get the COVID card?
Yeah.
Right here.
I know that it's in here, but where? The clerk's office? At an emergency station?
They go to building and planning.
Building and planning?
Right, yeah.
Very good, all right.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other old business before us? New business, any new business tonight?
Mr. President, I was remiss under Elections and Public Relations to announce, and Matt always has helped me out with this and done a fantastic job. February 22nd, at the Mike Anderson Event Center, inside the Dean and Barbara White Community Center at noon, I will be giving the State of the Town address during the Crossroads Regional Chamber Commerce Luncheon. There'll probably be close to 150, 200 people. Anyone that's interested, see Pat and Linda if you want to attend that. That's February 22nd at noon, it's a Tuesday. And Matt, thank you again in advance for, and the department heads for getting your information to Matt, he does an outstanding job.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I have a complaint, specifically with the new police commissioner, Mike Rich, I believe is his name is. Went on a Republican, which I think is the Republican Party, Maryville Republican Party's Facebook page, and I seen some things on there that were not good. Specifically, when we're trying to be diversity here and get our town together and all the things that's going on in this country, I don't want to see things like, you know, don't stand for, you know, like Maryville School is actually teaching critical race theory. They're not. I also don't want to see that, something called SEL, no, SEL, it's called Social Emotional Learning. And the thing is, we're trying to get our community together here. We don't need people, whether Republican, Independent, or whoever, to put those things on Facebook and try to divide this community further. I'm really irritated with that because you're a police commissioner now, you got to respect this town. So what I'm going to ask is that one of the first persons go to diversity training be Mr. Mike Rich. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. White. The only thing I will say to that is, last couple of meetings, we've been talking about freedom of speech. You know, everybody has a right to say what they want to say, post what they want to post, et cetera. So we need to stay consistent with that. If you have personal issues with the Republican Party for what they post, Leonard, please reach out to Commissioner on your own and have a conversation.
I think I directed it directly to him. Some things are not protected speech. I'm not trying to take his speech away, I'm just saying, do not be trying to divide us. That's what I'm saying. Because we got enough of that going on anyway, so.
Agreed.
In the future. He needs to go to diversity training. I didn't say he couldn't speak, I'm just saying, what offends me, because it was not all true. Maryville does not teach critical race theory. I talked to School Board President Delina Thomas about it yesterday, and she gave me an hour worth of talk on what those things were. That is not happening in Maryville School, and it shouldn't be posted out there as if that is true. So in the meantime, I would just suggest, not trying to take away anybody's freedom of speech, but one thing about it, I was offended by it. And I seen other things on there I was offended by that I didn't talk about. Thank you.
Mr. Reardon, would you mind reviewing that Facebook page and report back to the council if there's anything there that we should let Mr. Svetinoff know about?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. White, would that be good?
That'd be fine, thank you.
Okay.
For addressing that, Council President.
Sure. Very good. Moving on to public comment tonight, is there any public comment? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Darian Collins, I live at 2505 West 65th Avenue. I just want to make a few comments. I'm going to be attending the meetings on a regular basis because I've been a resident here for 21 years, a lot of things I like and a lot of things I don't like, and so I'm going to get involved.
Great.
Just a few comments I want to make. If we're going to have a major COVID initiative of giving vaccinations, I think that you need to extend that card program for Maryville residents. Now, if you're going to have the vaccinations for anyone in Lake County or Illinois, that would be great. But I think as an incentive to make sure that our residents are vaccinated, I think you want to extend that program for the cars. So I think you said 30, you only had 30 left. If you're going to have that program, have some cards to give to the people as an incentive to come for our residents. Just an idea, we got lots of money, let's think about that, number one. Number two, I spent the day in Indianapolis today with the American Federation of Teachers for the State of Indiana for their legislative day. There are a slew of just atrocious education bills in the House and Senate. We don't operate in a vacuum. What affects one body can affect another. And while you're the governing body for our town, we have a whole state of legislators who are trying to enact legislation, which is going to be detrimental to our public schools here. And so I would ask, I don't know what your political situ, you know, your political preferences are on those bills, but I would ask you to go in and look at these bills. House Bill 1190, House Bill 1251, House Bill 1072, House Bill 1041, House Bill 1134, Senate Bill 356, okay? Everybody in this room can be affected extremely negatively if some of those bills are passed into law. Our school district, which is very good, is going to put a horrible burden on our teachers, our administrators, and it is going to definitely take away from the quality of education. I wonder sometimes about our state because we need young families, we need diversity in this state, we need economic growth, and we are not going to attract people to help grow this state in the, for the long term with this kind of legislation. It's atrocious. So again, 1190, House Bill 1190, House Bill 1134, House Bill 1251, House Bill 1072, House Bill 1041, Senate Bill 356, Senate Bill 167.
Silence, please finish up, okay?
Okay, that's, that's, those are the only two things that I had to say. I have some other things, but I'll save them for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you much. You know, you can also write to the council, anytime you'd like. You can write to us, write to Pat. Start some dialogue back and forth so it's not just a two-minute limitation for you.
I will.
Yes, more than welcome, so please reach out. That'd be great. Mr. Suggs.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert L. Bugs and I'm a legal redress investigator for the Garrett-Benson NAACP. And I have two issues I want to speak about with my two minutes. First of all, I have received four complaints from Mr. Hardaway about black entrepreneurs trying to open up a business. Now, I want to ask this council, before I go to the newspaper, do you have an ordinance requiring minorities to provide 5,000 signatures to open their business? I'll talk to you a little bit later about that. I want to find out if you have it because I don't want to print something that's not true. So that's out there. The other thing is, I was here last week and we had 200 police officers, the FOP. Now, as you know, I've been coming here and by the way, critical race theory should be taught in every school. Everybody should know who did this, why, and what the results are. Now, they wanted Mr. Span to resign because he made a comment, "We hate police." But Mr. Minchuck was in the papers, right here. Kill Whitey. Kill Whitey. Lake County Police Officer over the public safety in Maryville. So if they do something here, who's going to chastise them if you doing something like this? Kill Whitey. Now, the FOP was here, so we tried to talk to them about, "Why wouldn't you censor this man?" Because this is, this is wrong. They say they didn't want any outsiders like the NAACP in. Now, when we, when this first came up, this Maryville Town Council took all of the seats out and the few that was left, they put on a reserve for FOP. But when they talked to Mr. Span, they had every fire door open. 200 folks in here demanding that he resign. That is wrong. Then you get up before this flag and say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible." You got one, you talking about diversity, this is Black History Month, you got one member on this town council that's not even a part, never been a chairman, probably never will be chairman of a committee. But then Mr. Hardaway got three, Mr. Minchuck has got three, and Mr. White just recently got one, and I think that's because she signed that diversity thing that they had.
Finish up, Mr. Bugs, please.
Big fire?
Finish up, please, your time is up.
So I just want to let you all know that if you're going to be talking about diversity, mean what you're saying because nobody's going to stand by and take this disrespect of something like this happening and you all upholding it because that was, I understand, a censure vote.
Mr. Bugs, thank you.
Two voted yes and four abstained. That means the censure was in place because an abstention is not a vote.
Mr. Bugs, we need to be fair to everyone, please. Your time is up. Thank you.
I was hitting to my seat. If you hadn't said anything, I would have been sitting down by now.
Thank you. Ms. Shine, do we have an ordinance or some type of $5,000, $5,000 signature petition?
No, we don't.
I don't know anything about that.
No, we don't.
Never heard of it.
Never heard of that, Mr. Bugs. I don't know where you get your information from.
I got it from the people that was trying to open the business. If you want me to bring her here outside and stick it, I would get it for you.
Well, she's more than happy to come here, but there's no such thing that we do in the town of Maryville, sir, is what I want to clarify to you.
Ask your son, he acts a matter of that. If you tell him, he's right there.
Tell Mr. Hardaway what?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Nicole is her name, and she's aware of the ordinance that we have in our town. She's aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Klaasner Allendorf. I am back. You remember me. I was here a couple weeks ago and I did speak and I have a couple things that I'd like to say. And once again, I wasn't planning on speaking, but so long as you continue deflecting, I will continue to be here and speak back to you, sir.
Good opportunity, good.
Absolutely.
All righty then.
All you're doing is, what, that's okay. I'm fine with that. Yep, don't worry.
Mr. Bugs, please.
You had your time.
Mr. Bugs, please.
You had your time.
Yep.
I did not interrupt you.
Two minutes.
So here's the thing. You know, Mr. Span did say something that needs to be apologized for, and if you recall correctly, sir, don't put words in my mouth, I did not ask for that man's resignation. What I asked for was an apology. And every youth in this community is owed an apology. And all of our officers that get out every day to protect the citizens of this town are owed an apology. These men and women every day put their lives on the line. You go ahead and keep holding that up because you know what that is? That is deflection, sir. And you know all you're doing? You're spreading hate. What, and you know, facts are too, that he said, "We hate cops." Do you think you're, do you think you're helping your youth, sir? Do you think you're helping your youth? And I understand it's a public forum.
Address us, please, not the audience.
And every, I understand everyone is allowed to stand here and it's an open forum, but this is hatred. That's every month, twice a month maybe, that we're spewing hate. These men and women go out, they put on the uniform, they serve and protect. Again, Councilman Minchuck apologized and to refuse an apology and anyone on this council who says he does not owe an apology is wrong. And when you're all up for reelection, I hope and I pray that your constituents choose right over wrong. Anyone who says that they have a problem and they hate cops, all you want is anarchy. Is that what you want for your community? I'm not saying all police are right, but you saying all police is wrong? And please don't shake your head at me, sir, because you're on that council too and one day you're up for reelection. And with that, I'm done.
I want to order. Finish up, you're out of time.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Sabina Mill, 3120 West 75th Place, Maryville, Indiana. No, I'm not going to continue this topic, I have other topics. So there are a number of residents that were really concerned about part of the ordinance. We understand, two inches of snow, coats need to come off. Now, I have a beautiful big driveway, I don't have the problem, I'm just listening to other people. And there were comments being made that people parked on their lawn to have their coats off the street because they didn't have a place to park. And at least one person got ticketed for parking on the lawn, which I know, the ordinance says you can't park on your lawn. But how can we have it both ways to where we tell them, "Get the car off the street"? Shouldn't we have an exception for if they have to take the car off the street for snow, that we actually waive the ordinance of you can't park on your lawn? I think we need to really consider that because I think it's inappropriate that this gentleman got ticketed for it. Another one I wanted to mention is that there were a number of people indicating that the COVID visa gift codes were not accessible to them even though they met the requirements because there's only a very short timeframe when they can come in here during the day and get those gift codes and they had to appear in person. So they could not get at the codes even though they met all requirements. So that would be inappropriate. These 30 codes would probably be gone if those people weren't working for a living. And that was their statement, okay? Another question I have, I'd like to understand, and not just me, there are other people too. We'd like to understand that food and beverage tax much better. So Councilman Pettit was in the news just now with a huge development of Mississippi. We got another big residential project going in at Broadway and 93rd. We got another residential project going in at, on 73rd Avenue. So all of these projects should really be huge tax drivers, bringing tax money into the city. So the question that a lot of people have is, why would there have to be a 1% food and beverage tax on top of that? And the only last one I have is.
Well, finish up, ma'am, your time is up.
Yes, I'm finishing up. The last one is that people find it obnoxious that there may be a potential dark poop test going when the CDC has actually eliminated that as an option. So that's the four items from the community.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Frank Kimmick, 311 West 54th Place. Been a Maryville resident for now about two years. Moved out of Illinois. My only item that I have is, I bought a puppy back in July, German Shepherd, and he is seven months old now, almost eight. I got cited five times for Section 5-6 public nuisance and I left it out and my child read this, my 10-year-old, and he said, "Daddy, do we have to get rid of our dog?" I don't understand how I can't let my animal in my backyard for five, 10 minutes to use the restroom and bring him back in the house. I have five, 600 some odd clips on my, on my Blink camera where he's not barking, he's out for 10, 15 minutes tops. I also have a 12-year-old black lab who is the old man at the house, same thing. What we're doing is we're putting in a six-foot-high fence once the ground thaws. I'm taking my dogs out separately now and I just don't understand why isn't there any language in the nuisance, the public nuisance thing for what times we can let our dogs out? If my 10-year-old comes home from school and wants to play with his puppy outside at 4:00 in the afternoon, the puppy's going to bark. That's their language, that's their communication. Why are we citing people for their animal when it's not a nuisance? It's a domesticated pet. I don't understand this and this is just baffling to me. I have to go to court on the 28th, which I'm going to, and I'm going to fight this in court as well. I don't understand, I just want, I would like to see some more language added to this public nuisance thing for a timeframe where our animals could be allowed to roam in their yard. I'm not saying leave the dog out all night. I would never do that. I'm an animal lover. My family loves animals. I've had dogs my whole life. I just don't understand why there's no language in here. That's the only thing I have, thank you.
We'll look into that. Thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
Mr. President, may I, may I respond to Mr. Bugs?
Sure.
Mr. Bugs, I appreciate your, your passion with this whole thing, but that's not why I got a committee because I signed that diversity document. I signed that diversity document because if I'm going to ask him to go, then I have to go. So that's why. I can't be part of the problem, I have to be part of the solution. And I, I think, for whatever reason, the president put me on that council, on that committee. He didn't put me on the committees that I asked for, but he did put me on that committee. It had nothing to do with that. I just want you to know that, Mr. Bugs, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Mr. White. Commissioner.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm not here as the commissioner right now. I do know how to separate the two between being the chairman of the Republican Party and the, a police commissioner now.
Well, that's out of respect, sir, you deserve it.
What I'd like to say, though, is being attacked, the Republican Party being attacked from the council, from that council.
Point of order, Mr. President, this is not an attack.
Let's let him talk, please, he's on his clock, okay? Go ahead, sir.
Anything that is said by a town council member up on that stage is a representative of the town itself. So is the town saying that the Republican Party is a bad entity in Maryville? Because what we said was, critical race theory is not being taught in the school, but SEL, which is critical race theory part 2.0. Now, this is in Roquita's documents from, if someone doesn't know, Roquita, Todd Roquita is the state attorney general for the state of Indiana. He has a book out about critical race theory and SEL and Castle that is out there right now. And critical race theory is against the law to pre, to, to teach in our school system. So we didn't say that. But I don't understand, I, I, I would like to understand, so you as a council member are coming against, you as a Democrat come against the Republican Party, that's fine. But you as a council member, when anyone speaks from that podium, it's a different story altogether. It's not your public forum to vent your disagreements or to make any type of comments that you want at any time you want. Because we're not either Republican or Democrat when we sit on these things. We're not black nor white, we're councilmen. And that's the difference.
Finish up, Mr. Rich.
Thank you.
So to clarify, there isn't one council member that speaks for the entire town. That's not how it works. Each council member has equal authority and they may speak their own mind at any time. That's how it works. We're going to finish up after this gentleman.
I'm Dennis Walton, one of the police chapels. I want to say that the town is, has been doing a fine job and being a blessing to the citizenship of the city. And it's important that whatever jobs we're doing, whatever positions we're in, we, by the grace of God, communicate those things effectively and adequately. We all have passions that we would like to see, but it's important that in our communication, the hostility and the toxic environment that can be developed does not destroy our purpose in what we're doing and what we desire to see. Let us communicate effectively, let us communicate with respect to one another and not allow the toxic hostility to blind us all in the direction we're going as the town. We believe in people, we believe in all people. We want to love and show respect to all people, but we have to do it with a sense of collaboration that is effective and that is helpful for us to come to a resolve where we can make the best decisions, lead this town in the best direction that we can possibly go for the betterment of our citizenship, the betterment of our community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Announcements, we do have a plan commission meeting February 15th at 6:30 here at Town Hall. The redevelopment commission meeting is February 22nd at 6 o'clock. The town council meeting, next one, is February 22nd at 6:30. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.